Is there a way you do it?
To do the videos? Or, what do you mean? You got recording going now?
So is that look okay?
This, so that we don't have, so that we just have the board. Yeah.
Good?
Yeah, that was good.
Okay.
So is that, is that gonna? Do they see, they see us, right?
Oh, yeah. So how do we not do that?
It's okay. Yeah, but there's.
Not my, not my notes, right? That's not taking up half their screen. Will you check?
They're seeing what's projected there, right?
Am I? I'm not now, am I? No, I'm not.
Yeah.
Okay, then that's not.
Yeah, they can see you. Yes.
Huh? Me? The board.
Can you see the notes and stuff? No notes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, I'm good.
We're ready to start. Okay. Great. Sorry about that, everyone. Technical difficulties. So we'll start the two meetings with the flicks of the flag. So welcome to the meetings tonight, starting with the public hearing. This is December 14th, public hearing on the, the new code enforcement local law. And that will have the December 14th town board meeting. And I'll just make a couple of comments before I open for, for a public comment on the local law. So this is, this is a low, this is a local law that allows the local administration of the New York State safety codes, the building code, fire code, and energy code. And that has been recently updated and becomes effective at the end of this month. And so it's, it's, it's basically, you know, it's, it comes from the state and this enables us, the administrative law, the text of that comes from New York State. And so that's what we are considering tonight. And so I will open the public hearing and which can be either comments from Zoom land or here. And so first is Robert Swanson.
Good evening. I was here last week to talk a little bit about this. Got a little bit more research. I had where they reached out to municipalities, January 20th, 2022, for the new micro 1203 rules and text. I have a copy of that. I'll read one direct thing on this. And which has been removed from the town law. Construction of temporary sets and scenery associated with motion picture television and theater uses. This is exempt from a building permit per micro 1203, which is the state of New York. It has been removed from the town law. Means you need a permit for it, which means it's more restricted to town laws. I'm gonna go into section nine of the model law that came from the state. You have two options. Create a local law or have specific procedures. It's pretty much what it says. I'm gonna point out the section nine, which is what is being referred to at this point from the city of Ithaca Building Code. Seven paragraphs, seven paragraphs, okay? Existing 2013 Town of Carolina law. Section nine. On safe buildings and structures, one paragraph. Okay? The new section nine, 2022 proposed Caroline. On safe buildings and structures, eight pages. This is written like a police state. It literally gives Mr. Babbitt permission to give a defective condition notice. And if you don't comply or appeal, it gives the town of Caroline the right to demolish your home and then charge you 30% more than what they paid to have it demolished for you. This is, this is ridiculous. And that's what I'm saying at this point.
So we're just taking public comment?
No.
If you do, if anyone in Zoom wants to speak, then raise your blue Zoom hand. All right.
Hello? Yeah, so. This is Cliff. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, so trying to figure out. See a hand up.
He took it down.
Put it back down.
So.
Put it back up. He put his hand back up.
Cliff, we, we'll take public comment in, in a, in total, and then we may respond after that.
Okay.
Thank you. When you're ready.
I'm gonna actually touch bases a little bit I lost, we touched on too. New York State's notification of the changing of this law and it needed to go into effect by the end of this month. But you guys got notified in January. So why is it taking so long for the town of Caroline to, to break this and bring it to public hearing now? At the time when there's so much turmoil in the community and everyone is distracted by the holidays. It seems that the board wanted to wait till last minute and adding much more than what was suggested by the state, which could be perceived as being malicious, another handed, especially with the temperature of the community right now. Was it the intent to have the same revision section nine? I failed to comply with DCM objections and appeals number three. The, the file to direct cost of the 30% surcharge because it's also listed in section nine J, the exact same paragraph. Cut and paste the same thing. And I don't know if it was intended or not. Um, safety, which is the section number nine, eight pages of law, really. It's a lot more than what the template stated and I, it's, it reads to me like code. Why are we putting code in the law? That's already covered in the code and I can see there be some potential problems with that if the code changes and our law doesn't change. And is it necessary to have those eight pages? Part E within section nine, it's regarding complaints. And there's already a section 12, which is titled complaints. So it's kind of redundant. And I think for consistent seeing that that affects efficacy, it should be all under section 12 and not in two separate places. In conclusion, the additional fluff that was added to this template is allows more hiring of inspectors, assesses more taxes and fees. And ultimately we add more tax costs to taxpayers in the long run. In my opinion, it's poor timing. It's not written well. It needs to be edited before it's adopted. But I am aware that you do have time constraints because it's due by the 30th. So I propose that you respectfully go through and take the template that the, the state gave you, adopt that and then go through and edit when you have more time. One, two, three. Thank you.
Yep. Bruce Murr.
Yeah. Like you said, this is introduced on the summer side of this 35 page law. Doesn't give the citizens, they don't agree with that, but adjusted and compared to our law that already exists. When you look at each file. There's no S, not one S. Why it gives a exemption is always given. Why the inspector has to respect the work? I mean, if it's an exemption that's given, it's because it doesn't need to be inspected. It doesn't need to go through, you know, all that written road. It's not a building that needs to be cold because it's not insulated. It's, it doesn't have to be inspected. And go to I was wondering about on page eight. I want the building commission to come in there unless it's six months on the day of the issuance. So the business issue of the problems. It's right, the best word, it would be non-avoidant, you don't commence work within the first six months. It's good for problems. And, and I'm wondering if this is even close to what our law already said. I don't believe it does. Also on page 10.
Page 10?
Yes, there's one. For the issue and then is A and that number one, it says anywhere is determined by code officer, occupancy, cancer. Only applicable provision of uniform code or ethical without regard to whether such work is or is not work for which a building permit is required. If you have an under exemption, ability is not required. Again, I don't understand what to be guarded to whether a building permit has not been issued for the work. If a building permit hasn't been issued for the work, I don't understand why you have to go through all that. And then you get to the page 13, the additional definitions of DCM. Effect condition notice. You look at numbers. Number two, there's one, there's two, two unsafe buildings. Under the first one, I, I'm sanitary. On the has to handle the safety, health, the reasons they're in, with the dustation. It already exists in the town. It's definitely not health. It'd be nice to see some of this.
So that's not about the language of the law?
No, it's pretty much some of this. On page 16. And there's a compiler that numbers three, the 30% charge. Is this normal or is this accepted? It doesn't seem to mean that the county charge 30% surcharge. Something. It just doesn't make sense to me. Then we're doing on page 20. The high has, which town should be named as an additional insurer. There are other listed as a certified holder. It's not, it does not suffice. I, I don't understand. And number six, the whole, the town is whole help in the finals. The order, each person working, impact demolition removal, they're all covered under insurance and everything else. I don't know why the, the town itself would be naming additional insurer. That's just going to be more costly for a person. And the town really doesn't need to be insured for their work. Under operating permits. Operating permits. Two, 21. Then go to, yeah, page 21, chapter 31, tents, temporary special event structures. And all that, number instructions, office support, temporary memory, so on and so forth. I can't understand under IX, why a sugar house would be under this. I was just wanting to hope that could be explained. Then go from there to page 43, which contains the tents, 120 days for tents and special events is the amount of time with duration of operation under that permit, if there is a permit. And we had that one on the town, we have one for this. It's been going on a long, about long 120 days. Yeah, on page 32, violations and appearance tickets. Last section, first, third, third. Last part is that this New York air blows. Here, the education, delegation, relations to a criminal or civil violation of the chapter. And therefore, if appropriate, impose any fine, penalty or sanction. I believe the word any fine should be changed because the fines are listed on the next page of what they wish to cost or another case down below of what fine should cost. So I believe you should either read, you know, there's a first and a second cost for the violation. Instead of impose any fine, which would read wide open, I would typically read the fine outline under the lab violations in verse 17 or you know, somebody that doesn't exceed this word of code any time.
Thank you. Peter, wait.
Thank you.
First, I want to heartily affirm Kathy's remarks about a couple picks on, on the proposed law. I did not read every word carefully. A few things jumped out at me. I think section 3D, perhaps it's 4D, talks about the responsibility of somebody who's making an application for a building permit. They seem quite honest, engineering, drawing, engineering things, maybe a miscredit, but that was probably.
What is on?
Speak up.
Yeah.
Speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's here. You don't have to stand there, but if you just speak towards it, it will work.
Yeah.
Probably Jesse's confused.
So I think that it's very onerous that somebody is at the point in the project of making an application for a building permit to have to furnish professional work product to the code officer. That's expensive. I mean, perhaps this is not a good example, but it strikes me that if somebody were going to put a porch on this house, relatively low cost thing, I could see the cost of engineering diagrams being in the same order of magnitude. It's the cost of doing the work. I mean, that's the implication I draw from reading that. So perhaps y'all can revisit that a little bit. There's a lot of stuff in there that doesn't seem to have anything to do with buildings or safety. For instance, the open fire set. I don't know where that came from. The DEC regulates that. I don't, I don't know how that ever came to be in your local law. Gosh, and there was something else. I apologize for my humility here. Yeah. Well, I said that there's a lot of stuff in there that hasn't got any business being in there. And oh, I know what I was gonna say, and I think this is a good point. The lower level of government have to comply with state law. And I understand. Your, his law.
No, I mean, listen.
Yeah, the lower levels of government have to comply with state law. The state law says something has to be this far away. The town can't say, ah, yes, this, I go. And I also get from an administrative point of view, it makes sense to affirm the, to affirm the state law in the, in the language of all of law, so that you can specifically empower code officer, whoever other town employees are involved with specific tasks of carrying it out. I get all that. But what I don't get is that there seems to be an awful lot of provisions in this that are added at the town's discretion. Now, following up on, well, I don't think that the state building code talks about open fires. It's I think Kathy's idea was, was really good. Well, adopt the minimum, well, what you gotta do to meet whatever statutory deadline you have. And then consider the rest of it, perhaps a more legally paced with more deliberation and more opportunities for people to prepare. I even have my doubts about a you guys are great, great courtesy, courteously, and I appreciate it, provided a link on the town webpage, it said here. And that pointed to the suggested draft local law, something put out by the Department of State. And I have not had a chance to find out whether that adheres strictly to the statutory language or whether there's some additional opinion encapsulating that opinion by somebody who wrote that draft. But really, the town's only legal obligation is to adhere to New York State statute. And so I make that point, thinking back now, how to look at it, then also I also back up what Brucey Robson said, too. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. All right, my. Does anyone on the, in remote attendance wish to speak about the proposed administration of code law?
No.
So if there are no more comments. I I was, I'm thinking of leaving the public hearing open for further comments, if people have them.
reading my statement. How do we come up with a 30% surcharge?
So.
You're asking.
Yeah, so. I just want to ask the board a question first and then I'll move forward.
Wait, are we closing the public hearing?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking you. So we could do two things. We can close the public hearing or we can leave, leave it open and we, you know, boot it at a future meeting. So.
I don't understand the.
So we could leave it open and then at a, at a future meeting, just simply reopen the public hearing. I think, I don't know, either way, or.
So that what you're proposing, that would propose not taking an action on the bill this evening. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
One of the consequences of this stuff that got previous to what you're saying here.
So I so my proposal is given, so I guess. My proposal is to, first of all, the, I'll just say that the, the timeline is, that's on me. So I got this from the town attorney, Mark Down from Caroline, earlier in the year. It, it got by me and then I found out, you know, like a month ago that we needed to do this. And so I put it forward. And so I've also, so I did inquire, you know, what are the consequences of not adopting it by December 30th? And the town attorney doesn't think, you know, that it's, it's not a drop dead deadline and we won't, you know, our heads won't drop off. So I would propose that we wait till January to take action on this.
Sometimes on regulatory stuff like that, if you don't, unless you, my experience is with my side of things is if you feel that the opposite would be different, you just get the states.
So.
It doesn't apply in this case. I don't know.
So I have every intention of, I, I want people to feel like they've had enough time to examine this and understand it. So, you know, that's, that's my proposal.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. We've had, we've had a public hearing.
We've had a public hearing.
It was complete. No one else wants to speak.
Right.
So I'm not understanding the language of keeping a public hearing open. We have, we have come to a conclusion, the public hearing has come to a close.
Right.
And then we need to decide what we do about it, right?
Yeah. So I think, given that we should close the public hearing, I know that
but we don't necessarily can't.
I think.
In the past, in the past of, it has been, I can think of one time it was left open to keep receiving comments from the public.
Okay, so it's a key.
Receiving comments, yes.
And then edit as you want, and then you reopen it to discuss the, the changes and.
In, in, in fact, the, we can receive comments regardless.
Right, right.
So I, and I, I, I feel like, I mean, yeah, I think probably the best process is to close this particular public hearing. And if we feel like we need to have a new public hearing, for instance, we revise it significantly, then we call a new public hearing.
Right.
And in either case, we can still take public. So.
All right, I agree with that.
Okay, so I will now close the public hearing. What we call for tonight and see, so and I want to, yeah, so close the public hearing. And the, the first thing I thought I would do is, is I think Cliff wanted to make a couple of comments. So I thought I would, let's see if he wanted to chime in.
So have we opened the business meeting?
Oh, yeah, you're right. Sorry. I think you just voted. Yeah. I guess to just do it. I think you just voted, yeah, I guess to just do it.
Anyone has more comments, please submit them to us.
In writing?
Yes.
Yeah, in writing.
Given the circumstances that we talked about.
So with that, I will now open the, the business meeting and thank people for their, their comments about the, the local law. And before getting started, I have two things that add to our agenda, because we don't have enough resolutions on the agenda. I thought we'd add some. So there's one to, for the, the county of Caroline to sponsor a grant application by the Caroline History Club to New York communities. For a project to investigate Native American history is Caroline. And then the other one is a resolution to authorize a contract with Monica Rock for the protection for me. I'll be adding those later. Great. So with that. Let's see, I have reports first that I would propose. Oh, right, is there anyone that wishes to speak at, at privilege of the public? Oh, yeah, I did. I didn't know if that was marked up from. Perhaps once we're.
Okay, I'll clarify something on the open burn. It's an operating permit for open flames, open burning, recreational and portable outdoor fireplaces. Conducting open burning, not including recreational fires and portable fireplaces. You can still have small bonfire and portable fire pit. That's not required. I will say the easiest way to, to get rid of this whole thing is to simply say, I, the town of Caroline, adopt the amendments made to part nineteen, my year twelve oh three as local law, and you're just adopting the new law that the state has. It's simple. Once again, making something more restrictive in the state law, you have to go through the proper channels and approvals to make a local law more restrictive. You cannot make it less restrictive. Unless it's authorized also, so.
So, yeah, thank you. And Bruce, where?
I was wondering how many people on the town board. My neighbor had outside and put on his house, you guys did a great job, so I'm gonna have him do the same thing for me, but I tell him that I have $30,000 to spend. Wouldn't you give a bid for me? And I'm just wondering, on this resolution to conduct home engineering for the feasibility study. I don't understand, first off, what kind of a business, doesn't matter where the money comes from, you say we are gonna spend more than $60,000, and let them know that when you have, you got a bid. The other thing is, you should get a bid from like three different companies, discuss what the best one is, decide who's gonna do the best job. And you certainly wouldn't let a company know what you're willing to spend before you give a bid. How come there's no bid to do this job, and just decide if you're gonna go with this one company, because where does that surprise? And you state that in here that you're not gonna spend more than $60,000, so you're telling them right off the bat that you would spend. It makes no sense to me that. Then I'd like to mention that in the beginning of this proposal, under the first paragraph, you say, whereas the town of Caroline has many residents and businesses that do not have access to commercial broadband, and whereas closing this digital divide is critical, as without broadband and internet service assistance are caught up in school, work, health, care, and families, having internet connectivity is essential, as having deep electricity in the water. And I'm wondering, when you write this and you admit this, how in the hell did you ever insist on doing the most important business as Tom has ever done, through Zoom?
Thanks. All right, I don't see any other hands up. Yeah, yeah, hey.
How do we focus the 30%?
Oh, so the 30%, I didn't come up, we didn't come up with that, so, I mean, I'll have to look up into that. But I presume that was prescribed in the, in the, no.
That was, that was an F A P, that is, that is stuff, that was above the answer.
Okay. That'd be a question to look at.
I'd like to move the.
Yeah.
Discussion of the code enforcement on now.
Right.
I, this is fresh in my mind.
Dan, mine is here, do you want?
That's true.
Yeah, is there anybody else that has any privilege?
No.
I, I mean, hi, Dan.
Yeah. So Dan, would you, would you want to give us your report now?
Yes, hello. I'm not able to get my video on, so I don't know if that matters to you. That you have stopped me from doing that. Can you hear me okay?
Heard anyone from the.
Do I have to select a different mic, Mark? Have him try it now.
Ouch. Can you hear me now?
Can you try to talk?
I am talking.
What speaker is it supposed to be on?
Yeah, I think that's the one we are, the speaker, the real tech, is that it, or?
This one?
Yeah. Test, test, test. Yeah.
It's through that, and I guess it's at a hundred.
Test, test, test.
Yeah, he's trying.
He is trying, yeah. Yeah. There we go, right. Is it test, test, test?
I've never, I don't know what it's supposed to do.
Dan, we have to move to a new computer at the last minute.
Okay.
We're trying to figure out the sound adjustment, because we can't hear you.
Oh, John says he could hear Dan.
He could. Oh, is the volume?
It's on, yes, Mark, it's on a hundred, see? Hundred.
I can't ask John what thing is what.
That's mine now, isn't it? Yeah, that's mine. You don't, you don't know?
So this, this should be. Shouldn't it be this, isn't it? This is. So the.
You can email the report.
But this is a bummer, we're not hearing anyone, right?
I mean, no one's raised their hand, yeah.
Let's see. Like a.
Feel better? I found this on the board story, doing the diligence. Come on, you're penny, you should keep it. Maybe we'll figure.
We all should keep it up here.
Yeah.
I'm logged in now, if you want me to do this by my computer.
To make Catherine focus, so you just go.
Dan, what happens if you start talking now?
Test, test, test.
Dan, can you try again?
Yes, test, test, test.
Shall we, shall we go?
You're turning the other microphone off.
Test, test, test. Okay, I'm not able to hear you. Shall I just give my report? Okay, and just so you know, also, when I tried to turn my video on, it says that the host is not allowing me, or something like that, like that, just so you know. Okay, here we go. First of all, the tentative paving projects for 2023 have been announced. And in Caroline, it is Caroline Depot Road that is scheduled to be paved in 2023. And like I always report about these, it's tentative, because things can change due to finances, or weather, or unexpected situations. So. You know, that's, that's what tentative means in this case. I don't know if this has been reported to you yet, that last month, a tourism capital grant was awarded for the Southville Recreation Way Extension Feasibility Study. It was for $43,000, and that's to fund a study for that section of trail from Burns Road to Banks Road. And the other thing I wanted to report to you is about the Community Recovery Fund grant. Been telling you a little bit about this over, it's been more than a year since we started this discussion at the county. And what this was, was last year, the county received about $20 million in federal COVID stimulus money. And we decided to take six and a half million dollars of that and distribute it to the public. So we laid out a whole program of how to do that, and we started accepting grants September, and we're getting close to being able to award it. So I just wanted to tell you a few things about it that are specific to Caroline. First of all, we had over $32 million total requested. We only have six and a half million dollars to give out, which meant it's no to a lot of very worthy projects. We got 214 applications, and at this stage, we are down to 52 recommended applications. And our final vote is gonna be this coming Tuesday, December 20th. So in the current recommended package of app, of applications are several that are specific to Caroline. But before I tell you what they are, I just want to remind you one more time, this can change, because there's, it's not over till it's over. So one of the grants is for the Caroline Broadband Initiative, and what's on the table right now is $132,000. You had requested 237,000, so that's about half of what you requested, but it's still a good chunk of change. So hopefully, I'm hoping that makes it through. Then we're also recommending $24,000 for a generator for the Brookton Dale Community Center, the main building. And then we're also recommending a $10,000 grant to Brookton's Market. And I'm just gonna read to you the, the set, the one some sentence summary that they wrote, just to describe what this money would be used for. Funding to cover operating costs for rent, PPP for employees, and some construction costs to install plexiglass and social distancing measures as a COVID-19 mitigation tactic. So those are the three grants that were specific to Caroline. There's a bunch of grants that would, you know, benefit everybody countywide, but I just wanted to make you aware of these. And just one more time, I just need to say that these are still tentative, and hopefully next Tuesday, everything will be finalized, and these grants will still be in there. That's my report.
You can turn the mic back on.
I got it. Okay, so now.
Shut off your speaker.
Maybe not. Those of us on Zoom can't hear you, or at least I can't.
Hello?
I can hear now, can you guys hear me?
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Great, touch nothing. Don't touch anything, don't, anybody move.
Great, thank you, Cliff, go ahead.
All right, I guess before I give the report, I'd like to address a couple of things regarding the public hearing. Rob, you've certainly been in the code enforcement for longer than I have. However, as a new code enforcer, I have the benefit of recently attending, currently attending, the basic training, and having spent 12 full days in the room with experts from the Department of State. And the, I don't know if any other changes were made to that standard text, but the one that I recommended was the requiring a building permit for stage sets, and that is not more restrictive. Those are absolutely covered by the code. The list of exemptions in the standard text are exemptions that local authorities are allowed to make, but they're not automatically exempt, so it's part of the code. We are allowed to take an exemption, and in order to take the exemption, you have to state it in the local law, and the, the. And the text from the local law that they gave us had all the exemptions that we're allowed to take. And I recommended that we not claim that exemption. Because the only structural collapse I've ever actually been witness to was a stage set that was built by well-intentioned weekenders for their children, but we let our children climb all over those things. And they're just cobbled together by non-professionals. And it makes sense to have it looked at by somebody who understands structure. And so again, it's not more restrictive. It is not subject to the Department of State's review. And this is the ruling of the Department of State. I also called them, asked the instructors, and they also agreed. I have the source law I could point you to if you'd like to look at it. And I called up, you have access to those same resources I do with respect to calling to D O S and asking them questions like this, and I did. And we are not making the more restrictive, we're simply not claiming that exemption that we're allowed to claim. And I didn't, somebody mentioned they don't believe open fires are addressed in the building code, and they are. Again, there's a lot of, not every open fire, but they are addressed in the building code. Other than that, that's all I have to say about that. I didn't dig too deep. You know, my understanding was that this was stock text delivered by the state. And that the town's adopting it. And my only input was that one with respect to stage sets. So yes, they do have to pull a permit. Yes, we're allowed to waive the fee for that permit. So the schools, when they have a play, won't have to pay the permit fee if we don't want them to. And again, we're not making the code more restrictive. That being said, since the last town meeting when I reported, I have issued nine building permits. There are 12 that are currently still in process. People have applied, but you know, either they didn't pay the check or they didn't submit a manual J or whatever. So there's a queue of 12. I've conducted 13 inspections. I've done four plan reviews. And I've done four subdivision exemption letters. So we get, a lot of people want to divide their property, subdivide their property. This town law states that if it's five or more subdivisions, then it triggers a subdivision review. So they come to me first, and if it's less than five, then, you know, I review the tax parcel in the survey maps, and if it's less than five or for no other reason, triggers the town subdivision review, then I stamp the plans as exempt from review, and the tax assessors will allow them to register it. So I've done that four times. And I've also assigned, since the last meeting, two addresses. Other than that, I've also added about another dozen or so of the paper files to the computer system. As I mentioned before, there was about 80 or so paper files that hadn't been added to the computer since Corey left. The temporary code enforcers weren't being asked to do that, as well, they shouldn't have. They were being kind enough just inspecting. So I'm trying to capture, catch up to that backlog, and I do it as I can. It was a very busy month in terms of four plan reviews is a lot. Well, maybe not, but it's, it was a heavy load for me. Kept me busy the whole time. And so hopefully it'll slow down and I'll get through that backlog in the slower winter months. And that's all I have to report.
Great. Thank you, Cliff. It sounds busy. Any questions for Cliff?
I have a question for Cliff. Can you hear us now?
I can hear you. Yeah. What was the question?
Super. What? What did you receive that you modified the stage clause to? Like, I'm trying, and we're going to leave this discussion, but you're part of it at this point, like how? I'm curious, what, what document you received that you marked up?
I didn't mark anything. I got an email with a copy of the code of the proposed change. I was asked to read it and comment. And I emailed, I returned the email and said I would like to change that part. And I don't remember the chapter and verse.
Oh, so it was already, okay, so.
Any questions for Cliff?
Thank you for keeping so busy, Cliff.
I'm trying.
Great, okay, yeah, thanks a lot, Cliff. All right. So we'll, I guess, enter a discussion about the what we've heard tonight, and I think they don't, I think most of the comments I've heard have been addressed back. Or I'm going to need to do research on. Certainly my, you know, this, this track was marked up by the town attorney for Caroline, and it came from the template. My understanding was that it is, as Cliff said, not more restrictive and doesn't add restrictions. And I did ask our attorney that if we wanted to make it, we can make it more restrictive, but if you do that, you have to apply to the state to get that approved. You cannot make it less restricted.
Page by page and sentence by sentence. I want page by page and sentence by sentence. And there is eight pages on the statute of bill. And I'm not complaining, because that's my complaint, but I think it would be more restrictive than what the state requires.
So. I will look at that. Yeah. Right. I will look at that. That was not my understanding at all. So I'm curious, I want to see what's going on there.
Ironically, I was related to see more guidance in that area.
I agree, but I don't think you can.
Just glancing it. I know that, I guess, a couple of things I did last week. Mr. Swan's world suggested removing, since we don't have any parking garages, removing that. You absolutely cannot do that. Need to keep that in there. It's just, this is a framework for anything that could happen in the county. I don't anticipate a parking garage next week or anything, but. So that's, that's one thing, as well as the timing of expiration of building permits. That's also, Cliff followed up on that, that's set by the Secretary of State. And so we also, the one, you know, we don't manipulate that. We can, you know, the town, by resolution, the town board establishes, you know, building permit amounts, things like that. We can certainly, we could say that, for instance, a second building permit after one year is, is for, or something.
Since we haven't reviewed our fees in these two years, so one of the things that I recommend is that once we pass this law, we then consult with the history of your structures.
Is the duration of building permit even changed from two years to one year? Because I looked at people for the, for the, for the, and they're all two years. Really? But that's curious. Yeah. My understanding was, I mean, I thought I looked at the 2013 law, it was one year.
Our building permits currently expire in a year. And I don't know if that's aligned with the law or not, but that's what the system generates when I, when I do one. And I believe that's just to keep so that there's not open permits under old codes, because the code changes pretty quickly. However, if they renew a permit, it, it's under the code it was applied under. So, you know, there's a loophole around that anyway. You can keep renewing a permit and keep it going for years and maintain status under the code that was in force at the time it was applied for.
Okay. So I might have misunderstood what you told me, Cliff. So, so you're saying that, like, we may have leeway to modify the duration of a permit?
You do.
I'm trying to find it in here, because I have the model law. Okay, so that was.
Yeah, I don't know. That was Guy that commented on that.
Right, so, okay.
Well, Guy commented on a lot of things, and I guess my, I mean, I'll just chime in. I have spent this entire week trying to digest it. And what would be extremely helpful would be to just have a very simple marked changes document. And I am officially requesting that for myself, because I cannot, I mean, this is just, let's be done with all of this. I think, we think, this is my understanding, like you said, it's a guy, like, I'm not, I'm not being critical of anyone here. I actually appreciate that the public, like, I mean, thank you all for your close read of this. It's helpful and important, and I share all these questions, quite frankly, you know, I don't think there's some, like, anything untoward happening, like, you're just trying to do your best to, like, get this thing done, but it's.
But the other thing that occurred to me is that when we have our next public discussion of this, it feels like that.
Well, I don't, respectfully, I don't need a whole conversation with Guy. I need a document that marks changes. Like, I mean, a clip, like.
I'm sure he has it, so that's fine.
So this all would be avoided if we just knew, like, we have the 2013 law.
Right.
And he presumably took some combination of this, plus NYCRR1203, plus the model law. Right? And then somehow crafted something for us. And I just want to know what he did. When we have that.
Model law. The two four building permits. I time rules. It goes down through specific, building which shall expire specific interval. Parenthesis, Department of State suggests an interval not to exceed 12 months. Suggests, I'm going to read it, suggests. So. So. Suggest versus shell. So I think, I think that's obviously a reasonable request, and that we should do that. And you know, when to discuss this further. Sure.
I actually read them side by side. I was surprised they're not dramatically different. Or in some instances, it's more expensive. So the one area that was much more expensive around the demolition.
Where does that come from?
Well, that's, I would assume that that came.
Well, I'm looking at what I have from the state, and that's not fair.
Well, that's something we can ask. We should, we can ask that. So that's why it would not be unhelpful. Invite Guy to the conversation, which is why we have him to give us support.
Lower the temperature on it.
Well, no, I don't, I mean, I don't see why that's raising the temperature. I just want as much information out there as possible. But why, really, the temperature got risen just because of the timeframe of this, which is really unfortunate. But other than that, it's kind of bread and butter, and it's fine for us to have a closer look at them. It would be helpful to have, I hear, to understand why he proposed this and that.
I mean, I'm only one of five. If you guys want to vote on it tonight, that's fine.
This is my person. I heard that, and I understand, I don't, I don't want this to feel rushed or slammed out or anything like that. So I think it gives, you give people another month, you know, during the Christmas holiday to re-code administration law. You know, I'm happy with that. So especially after reassurances that. It's just not propped.
Can you guys, the building inspectors, there are any exemptions that should be in there?
We have a comment, right? Yeah, about the action.
Yeah. Bruce, I'll talk to you. Building. The micro 1203 is the law, use it on the right to enforce on us. All right. Thanks, everybody. So let's see, move on, so move. To reports, exactly. So I will. Did, did you have comments that we received tonight that you wanted to respond to?
No, I'm just trying to, like, it's fine, we're moving forward, but I just want to make sure that all the board members have a chance to comment. This isn't about me being like.
No, I'm glad you said that. So I assumed that the session was over. So if anybody has some other thoughts or.
Yeah, that'd be great. Because I was trying to process that, figuring out.
One thing I'd like to add to this, Jay's, Jay's, Dan Clyde's thing is there was an update from the assessment.
Is this about the code thing?
No, this was about just assessments coming along in 2022 will be going up at least 10% to 30%, and so we're maybe hearing about, you know, people getting notices on their assessment. Coming from the town, they are. It doesn't change taxes, but a lot of people make the leap that my assessment's coming up, my taxes are going up.
Sure, okay.
Just so that, you know, if you do hear about it, just prepare to, what makes such your taxes a cash rate, not your assessed value.
Right.
Assessed values are going up significantly. So this.
That was a comment you had for Dan?
Just kind of, you know, county stuff.
I see, okay.
Not, you know, this is in terms of that's kind of a, you know. At least the assessments.
Okay. Yep, that's, that's an important question for people to understand. Okay, I'll move on to my report if I can find it. There it is, okay. I, I did meet with two fellows from Spectrum regarding their service at the town and so they can now provide fiber upgrade. And I think we're going to be doing that to the town hall, so that'll be nice.
Give me one of these problems.
We'll see. And I did ask them about the spectrum line that we've long known about at Buffalo Road to McCormick Center and whether people could tap into that. I don't think they can tap in their, apparently there are two lines that run up there. And anyway, they were going to explore it. They had a conversation with Jesse who lives on it, along that road and but we'll see. I, I don't know. That'll be interesting. And I asked them about build out, current build out plans for Spectrum in Caroline. So I hope to get more information on that.
We've asked them a couple of times about.
They did let me know about a lot of other services they offer. They did let me know about a lot of other services they offer, including voiceover internet phone. And so. They did seem very attentive and were aware that they had been in touch in. A decade or something like that. So.
I mean, thank what competition.
Yeah. I do think, because I also spoke maybe a month ago to someone who was. Just kicking around for, I think, point broadband. And they, they know a fiber line right across the street there. So. Whatever we do going forward, we'll probably wanna get a proposal from. The point as well. On Friday, we helped the pre-bid site visit to the highway facilities for the next phase of the project. Which will be design and. Construction management. There were six proposers who attended and. Bob and Cal both helped with that. Thank you. For TCOG Emergency Services Planning, the position for emergency medical services program manager has been posted. It's, it was posted on December first and is open through the month. At the top of the county HR site. And so that person could be. Responsibility for developing a countywide first response. So that's. Extremely exciting. And the members of the TCOG. Committee, including myself, are gonna be participating. As far as I know, at last report, well, we're gonna be participating on the. Task force. So it'll be sort of advisory to the group and on the interview committee for the program manager. Looking forward to that. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the Caroline History Club has asked for us to sponsor a grant application. They've submitted to New York Humanities for Exploration of Native American History in Carolina. Becky Dewitt is spearheading that. And so.
I'll just add a little bit of context for that.
Great.
Um, humanities, New York, this is New York State Humanities Council, which receives most of its funding from the national. And the chair, the board of directors of humanities in New York. Humanities in New York runs a community's conversation program, which is a grant competition. And because the, this, the Caroline History Group has been so. Way active, I told Becky about this a couple of months ago and encouraged them to get in touch with Humanities in New York. I have to recuse myself from the whole thing. I'm really glad they did this because I think that that's very important. And I was on a call with the governor's office. On Tuesday about. Funding. I mentioned their work and because the governor's office likes to hear about these small local. They were really enthusiastic about it. So that's.
That's great, cool.
And I might add just one other thing related to TCOG market. At the TCOG meeting. What the assessor's office is gonna recommend against doing the local. Appeals process where people come in locally and they're recommending against it because. It gets almost no activity. Very, very little activity and it takes tons of staff time. So they think that they can achieve the same thing, just to the process of people appealing to the assessor's office. That's a change.
Yeah, they, they sort of changed that a few years ago. We got it last year and yeah. I, I support that. I think that's a really good idea. What's happened is. I, I support the assessment office doing away with the local bar. Thanks. And the reason is that the assessment office has gotten better at, they can accept, they accept. Reviews at any time of year. You can go in there, work with them and get information. So. It is extremely, they really. The local bargain to just one date in a year and they're very poorly attended. So. Yeah, as long as you do it.
And just to clarify, TCOG did not recommend this, the assessor's office.
Yeah.
Recommending it to the county legislature.
So what it's worth, my experience was that in the past, there was a significant assessment increase. A lot of people attend the local assessment.
The final thing I might be.
I'm trying to take notes and. Yeah.
So this one's important. This is Son and Waters working on. The disruption of six months of the stream work that was done. Or the banks road washout upstream has washed out a little bit on the front end. So. They are developing a plan to reconstruct that. And so. Office and Son and Waters with an engineering firm, partner in liquidity. And so. Son and Water has funds for the, the engineering study. So. They'll be, they'll be funding that up, but I think they're looking to the town for support and getting landowner agreements and. Cooperation. And I think the town would fund the, the work. When I asked him, he thought it would be about twenty or thirty thousand dollars. It's really just the, the upstream. Some structures, you can see their county office, where they need to be restructured. I, I think that's a justifiable expense in protecting town infrastructure. That maintains a. A significant stream improvement project that was done. So. I guess it's just to obtain easements to do the work when it's done. I don't think it's gonna be.
So Mark, a couple of questions on that. You're saying the town is gonna fund what part of that project?
The construction part, which John estimated twenty to thirty thousand.
And how far is this all off the tower?
It's not in the town right away. Yeah.
How come this hasn't been asked to the colleagues themselves, the colleagues bridge?
For me.
It was a county asked to fund the MS. I mean, this is.
The county is spending the, to the tune of about twenty thousand dollars to engineering study. So. So they're looking for, you know. To see if, you know, to move forward, they wanna know that we're gonna be supportive of the project.
Trying to have some of our own projects. We have some serious erosion problems on Brady Hill. That's a huge project.
Okay, so.
So, but this is the first effort. Any of that work, so.
Yeah, it sounded, it's not at the road at all.
Does not involve our highway department.
It doesn't involve the highway department at all. And yeah, so John invited me to the meeting and just wanted to know. The counts.
We're hearing it just as you're hearing it. So we, we all have equivalent, you know, speak in it, I think, like, I don't know that this, yeah.
So the money wouldn't be coming from the highway. It's not a highway issue.
It's not a highway issue.
It, it would be. It's coming from the, the. Town funds.
Okay, yeah.
So.
It become, yeah, from the. That's what I'm asking. So is it a highway issue?
No, right? The answer's not.
Correct.
Okay.
It's stream stabilization issue. But it, it does, so yeah. It, it does have implications for stabilizing the stream. To protect. County infrastructure. So the banks road. We can talk about it, but yeah, I think it's. It's possible, you know, I mean, we could apply for grants to support the project possibly. Alright, so.
So I, I think you want me to like, whether we, what do you want us to do? And if they dispel the law.
I think it needs to be rewarded to design and construction management. Okay, they're gonna be managing the construction process as this is described in our P. I asked, I asked Tommy about that.
Okay. Okay. Cause I think there was some, you know. How big a project is this gonna be? Do they have a, a budget? I think it's one of those chicken and egg things. We kind of decided something that we can't possibly afford. I just, I felt a little. Everybody, that was kind of the first word. Well, what do you want us to do? That's what I was.
Right.
Yes, we've got a. An old. Power facility, the main building needs to be replaced, but you know, are we gonna replace it with something similar, something a little. So we kinda wanna know, well, where do you want us to design and how, how can we make it fit in this lot? Say it seems like a chicken. Yeah, I think we need. I didn't have enough responsibility it is. We need to, right? Just see what they come back with this and. Go from there.
Yeah, so I, I, I mean, my own feeling is that they. What we want from them are, you know, creative solutions for us. And it could be more than one. So we could. Say, you know, like, what's, what's your first option? You know, what's another option? We could.
So we could, we could take that to them. Don't just give us one.
Right.
You know, or maybe they come back and say, let's just refurbish this old.
Right, that could be. You know, one, you know.
Or refurbishment and, I don't know, whatever. I just, they all were.
And, and what I said at the meeting was, you know, we. My thinking in writing our P is that you would evaluate it based on. A town size of Carolina with this equipment fleet, like what, what would work, you know, what are creative ways to make this. Economical and efficient and durable. So I. Maybe we can. Think about, you know, embellishing a paragraph that gets a little more.
Yeah, I think.
Direction.
I think it needs something like that, needs to be.
Okay.
So.
Any other thoughts or?
Fuck around that whole topic, I'll just bring it up now.
Sure.
The other question was the. Feasibility study that had been done previous, that was asked by multiple people. My thought on the whole thing was, we've already picked our site and it's not a question of where the site is going. The site is where the site is. We all understand that. But there is information in the feasibility study that would help them. Come up with their ideas. One person, one engineering firm already has. So if we're gonna compare apples to apples amongst six different firms, then everybody should have the same. Information and my thought, my other thought is it's also public information. It's not like it's top secret information. So just, we, we pay for it. We, we pay for it as a tool. So use it as a tool. I don't see how it's gonna hurt. Anything in the process. We're not, we're, we're beyond changing sites, but there is. There's matches, elevations, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there that is used to, to these guys. And in the end, if these guys don't have that information. Then they have to use their own resources to do it, which eventually raises the price for us in the end. So let's save ourselves. A little bit of money we can save ourselves and just put it out.
Yes, I, I think, I wonder about, we could extract. The relevant, relevant information from the, the verge study. And the, and the quarter could be available too, if they wanted to look at it.
Really, the other sites don't necessarily matter, but. Even waste the time of going through a. Sixty two.
I'm just saying.
Pages of stuff that really.
Post just, we're gonna post an addendum, which is of answers to their questions or concerns. And so I'm just thinking. In doing that, we can extract information to develop something like. You and I were talking about calculus now, about, you know, or however we. Formulate it, you know, whether it's gonna be, you know, develop, you know, use your creative mind, come up with three design options for us. And we could even say, you know. Give a budget range or something if we wanna go there. I mean, flying to leave budget alone. I just. Ask them, you know.
Could we ask a projected. Square foot budget, you know, just generally what they would anticipate for.
So the one. Yeah, just give them a.
The one question, Tim, can you pertain to that? With no real direction for footage that we wanted. It was pretty vague, like, you know, publicly explaining that your cost is significantly gonna change from ten thousand square feet to twenty five thousand square. Thirty five thousand square feet. Well, they can build that in. They can explain that in that. And what they're gonna try to do is maybe to break some of that down and say, alright, in the end, if you're only building ten thousand square feet. You know, this is the ballpark range of what it is, or if you're at thirty or.
Right.
Or whatever, but.
That'd be perfect. That'd be great.
Yeah.
Right. Great, so.
In a lot of that, you know, grants, I think, you know, companies could secure it. I mean, just back the envelope stuff for me and they shut me out of this. Speaking inappropriately. And the feasibility study that was suggested building. Cost was five and six million. It was a nice building. It was very economical, durable and efficient. It's. My feeling, but we have to have, you know, a grant for. And they can, that's great. If that kind of capital is out there. Fine, it's not. And I, the reason I thought out the idea of two million dollar bond is that for ten thousand dollars a month.
Okay, thank you.
But with all this discussion too, keep in mind that. I have you and myself for the committee. At some point. I have talked to Mark about us actually setting down. Remote, kind of, kind of in the same page, same area, or at least in the same chapter, the same work. On moving forward. So I don't know if it is actually physically possible to get all of us together and talk about some of the stuff. But as I talked with Mark, there are gonna be some questions coming in. So. We did suggest, you know, we talked amongst Mark, myself, Kale, that we could sit down and answer some of these questions. We did suggest, you know, we talked amongst Mark, myself, Kale, that we could sit down and answer some of these questions, but. You guys are also on the same committee, so. Is that something that you guys are comfortable with and we can bring stuff back to you guys, but if not, then all of us will have to sit down and answer all these questions.
You're saying questions from the.
Questions from each firm.
Right, well, we're. We're all gonna be.
Well, that's what we're asking, do you all want to deal with them, or are you comfortable with us answering some basic questions that are pretty basic?
I mean, can I just chime in?
Yeah.
You, I mean. We can do both, right, so like, I get questions.
The recent discussion.
There'll be really easy answers, and I'll know the answer, but whatever I get, I'll run by everybody, you know, and. So I don't think, I don't think that part. Has to be one that requires another public meeting or anything like that, but yeah, I think we can work. Together that way, maybe that seem reasonable, just to.
I'm like, like I said, everybody is more than welcome to sit down, but I just don't know how I can physically get everybody together with everybody else's schedules.
I'm not sure who every, I'm confused as to who everybody is.
What's up?
Us, right?
You mean us?
I'm talking to five board members and myself.
Well, we can do, we can do that.
It would have to, so the answers are to like. The nineteenth or something, so.
They do the nineteenth, they do this week.
January.
January. And we can do it by email.
Yeah. It's not expensive.
But again, with all of us together, it has to be a public size.
No, but we can do it by email, probably, quite easily.
Yeah, I mean, we're not expending money or anything, we're just, you know.
As for your questions.
Trading thoughts.
Well, I'm, as, and again, Mark's already heard a lot of what I'm bringing up, because I haven't run into Mark numerous times during the week. The amount of time I sat alone on that feasibility study is more. Than I think you guys realize, so for us to take this whole project and only me, once I wanted a board meeting, because Mark had suggested taking an hour during a board meeting and we can. Over the facility, stuff, questions, procedures, where it's going, is gonna take more than one hour of all.
I don't think we're there yet, I thought, let's just let it. Right, we're not, we're, we will make this happen, right?
I mean, if that's the way you want to look at it, it's fine, but I'm just, I'm bringing a few things up, we have a hard enough time to see if everybody can get on one meeting at six o'clock Tuesday. But on the next twenty five.
Well.
So it's, we can determine later, I'm just bringing it forward, this is stuff I talk about tomorrow, but I actually felt that everybody on the board should hear my questions that I asked.
I'm happy to hear, I mean, I we've not received a single board wide query about this to date. Right, so I'm just, I don't know where this frustration is coming from, like, we're moving forward, we're gonna have, this this process is gonna move.
So to to explain where it comes from. And Cal couldn't speak to it, Friday was actually embarrassing, if you want to know the truth, and Cal will say the same exact thing, it's actually embarrassing. Because we went into an RFP with absolutely no direction, none. It was so vague, I've got six engineering firms looking at me, because I'm the one that's there at ten o'clock. Looking at me, asking me, what exactly do you guys really want?
I was there, Ken. Awesome.
I'm always gonna answer these questions of, oh, what do we really want, like, how do I answer, we had nothing, I and I talked to Mark. Days and days prior to that saying that we actually need to get together, the whole committee, this is supposed to be a committee, a working committee, to put a few things together to get this little bit of direction to steer us, one way and everybody be on the same page, we wanted to completely wind, and Kelly, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but. That's exactly how I felt, that's.
Well, I didn't feel that way, I enjoyed the meeting, I enjoyed meeting all the proposers, I was not embarrassed, I took their questions. You know, they asked me if, you know, other sites are in play, I said, no, this is, this is about this site, and I followed up with him and he pointed me to the confusing language and I haven't received many other questions, but when I do, well, I I'm happy to work on them and. I, you know, I think we talked tonight about giving, you know. Creating, you know, generating ways for them to. Develop their proposals more concretely, I think this has been a good discussion, I. I have no problem with it, so I think what Catherine was saying is, I mean, I hear what you're saying, that the process down the line is gonna be different than it is right now, but but for right now, we're.
That's fine, if you don't want to meet. You know, as a group, right now, then meet later. Just putting it out there, I said it again, I've had this conversation with you multiple times.
Yep.
Figured I would have an entire committee.
Thank you.
That's pretty much all I have on the whole feasibility study. And again, I did provide Mark with a copy, digital copy today, that's, we didn't have a digital copy before.
Good to have, thank you for sending that.
What's up?
Thank you for sending one, it's good to have.
Okay. So for now. We'll be receiving questions and and when I do, and. All. You know. Let you know what they are, and we'll talk about it, so.
I'm just really stuck on the thing of having some sort of budget.
Yeah, but, I mean, so, I mean, it's sort of like.
I mean, I guess what Cal's saying is, don't waste your time drawing up a. Centimillion dollar facility, you want to kill. Right, even remotely afforded to.
But they, they know this, and I mean, that's why we're asking them to have proposals, they're aware of the town budget, they're aware of parameters, that's why we're relying on them to give us proposals.
You know, that's where some of these questions come in, Tim, and so I don't think they know all of that.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
Because there's a question to that.
Yeah, but that's, that's the kind of thing that will be easy for them to ascertain when they sit down to do this. That's what I would do if I was writing a proposal for someone who would do this, what the town budget, get a sense of the finances. So I don't, I don't, I don't see that as a stumbling block, I I understand the concern, but, but I was trying, that term would do that. And and I would expect them also to advise us, just as Cal did, here are the parameters that you can probably do, and then here's a tipping point, do you want to go with the tipping point or not, but that's, that's why we want their proposals.
I guess, you know. If I, if I, if I was to approach a contractor and say, I want a new bar. I I would expect one of his first questions would be, are you gonna go fifty thousand, five hundred?
Yeah.
And that's the, and, I don't know.
That's what we're telling them, right?
Um, we're we're telling them, it was a bar.
But we. We've got an equipment fleet.
Yeah.
We've got, we want a salt ship.
Yeah.
We need a fueling station.
We got a footprint.
Yeah, yeah, footprints, footprints, a huge part of it, it's gonna be, construction is going to be. A huge challenge.
We want to see.
That's what I heard.
We want to see what they tell us. So. Catherine.
No.
Please, no?
No.
Okay.
I'm listening.
Okay.
So. So the deadline for their questions is. The deadline for the questions and the deadline for the responses. The, I'm just trying to clarify at times that.
I think the deadline for the.
We'll see when we get back.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just asking when we're gonna get their information.
Right.
What the, what is the deadline, I don't remember.
Yeah, it's like, it's in the next week.
It's like the nineteenth or four thirty years. Yeah, and they were worried about the time that something, and I just, you know, this is a small town.
They were worried about what?
The time on the day, and I just, I don't know, sometimes I just feel like we make these rules and regulations that are for like Baldwinsville or something.
Yeah, I thought the same thing.
You know, this is a small town, you know, but we're just, you know, if you call us up and say, I can't handle it, do it for another two days, we're not gonna cut you off. We'll we'll try to work with, so.
I I have one question, I guess, about process, but just.
I'm not surprised.
You know, like, there's three people who were at this meeting, plus all the other people.
Yes.
And what I'm hearing is that there were different impressions of this meeting. And I'm also hearing that maybe you were fielding individual questions. And maybe you were fielding, like, I don't, I, help me understand, like, what the structure was of this meeting and how this is what's happening right now, and I guess I'm hesitating, it's at nine o'clock and we have a whole agenda, but like, unless or until we move forward with with this and and all this that's in the air. Forgive me for like social working this, but like, there's some stuff going on right here, and unless we deal with it, we we're, we cannot move forward with this. So I, and I've said this before, so I don't know what needs to happen to like. Deal with this, but I'm just proposing that that's happened at some point, and if that is like some, you know, sit down meeting that is you're proposing, then I'm on board for that. I just don't really understand what is happening right now.
So there was a question of the feasibility study, if that could be. Put forward to all the applicants. And then there was a question of, do we have to give it to them, do we not have to give it to them, is it a good thing to give it, or should we go back, and that's a question, so these guys are due to turn questions in, and they are waiting on to to see if they can get this or not get it for some other questions. So here, their questions are due, like, on the nineteenth, and they have made a decision to make this a public document or or whatever, however you want, whatever you call it, that decision hasn't been made.
This is that question is the first example, you're helping, you know, is that, so here, see, the red one, remember, I replied, like, was, does one person give this to another, how does this work?
Right.
That's the example of like a question that requires response by all of us.
Right.
Thank you.
So that's where my statement of put forward, it's already public information, there's no, there's nothing vital or critical or confidential information in it. They're already paid for it, just put it forward, let these guys use what they want to use out of it, if they want to use it for the questions, fine, if they don't, it doesn't cost us a nickel, it's a digital document. You know.
Okay, but that was one question, and I responded to it as if it was like a town board email, so then who is like collating the answers to this question?
The questions from the proposers.
I mean, is that?
That would be me.
Okay.
For the question, okay.
That's the first question.
I mean, Bob's just provided this example, I'm I'm really trying to get an example of what is happening, he gave an example of that feasibility study question. Is an example of a question that we now need to respond to, and I'm saying, I'm confessing, like, I just responded to it as if it was like a board discussion, and I just sent my question along.
And it was.
But evidently, I need to follow, but like, okay, so then.
In my view. Yeah, but that's fine, but I think this discussion is helpful, so. I'm not confusing it, right?
I'm just one of five.
Can I? Can I?
I don't need to be the spokesperson for this process, like.
This is Jesse, the town mediator.
Bob got the impression that some of the engineers that came. Were prepared for creating this, let me just pick and choose what I think is best here, he felt they were looking for some kind of guidance. He thinks the feasibility study would be, answer some of the questions that they had, and that's why that's part of it.
Yeah, and so one concern I have about that is that in the La Verge report, for instance, I mean, they have a proposed the facility size. And so I, that's why the discussion we're having tonight, I think, is important, it's just to inner responses to frame, you know, what we're looking for from them, not necessarily what's stamped on the La Verge report. So my concern is that we just, I mean, I think that we should provide the La Verge report, because, like you said, it's public information. And then I think we need. Language that we had in the addendum to say, you know, we're, we're looking, you know, for some, if the language is in there already, but, you know, we're looking for something that. You know, economically efficiently meets our needs, we could give them, you know, so we use a a square footage range or a bay number range or something like that, of, you know, we want something that's twelve to fifteen bays or something, that. Whatever, so I, you know, I think it would be, you know, if. You know, I I.
We also have six, six firms.
Right, that I got.
Six firms, one firm already has. Another firm already knows about, two other firms.
So we're not arguing, I I mean, I'm not arguing against providing it, I'm just trying to.
So rather than redact a bunch of stuff, who cares what building they put in, if you think these guys are gonna commit a piggyback building that La Verge put in there. When clearly the birds hasn't continued on a whole project, they're not just gonna take all the birds, put in there.
Well, I mean.
I mean, these guys do the stuff for a living.
We need, we need to make clear what our expectations are, if we're making the stockings available, I mean, if I didn't see anything, I would say, well, the town of Carolina's looking for this.
Yeah. I may get three times that, it's not like we give them a budget either, so I'm I'm trying to make this as easy and as simple as possible. Just put the document, it's public information, I mean.
Oh, okay.
Or correct.
I'm not arguing against providing the.
Anybody in the town, they come in and get a copy, it's, so, there's no secrets in it, so just put it out there and be done with it.
I I thought we already agreed to this, I'm not sure why we're going.
Right.
Right, well, you're talking about redacting information.
No, I'm not talking about redacting anything, I'm talking about writing text that revise separately based on our discussions to say, you know, here's what we're, here's how we envision it, or here's the, or we do the the three option scenario or something like that, that's all. I'm not talking about redacting it or carrying.
Time wise, if persons are doing a nineteen, today's the fourth one, there's no way we're gonna start redacting a whole bunch of stuff and get it to them in a reasonable time to answer questions.
I mean, I do the questions, you know, that, you know. I mean, one of our responses that I see is, yes, we'll provide the the site evaluation report, and it's available on the town website, but I think we need this other information to help them, so. And I I I think it would be good to engage the the county engineer, Donby Carter, he's got experience in this realm, and so, you know, maybe.
Can you do that for me?
Well, I wouldn't turn it over to them, but just, you know.
I'll obviously see what questions we get before we.
Right. But we know we want to provide some guidance, definition, right, some.
Definitional guidance.
But I I can too. I think we're on the same page, right?
I, I, this might be lost, to be honest, in a couple weeks. We can hash it out later, let's move on. Ten different resolutions to go over yet, of course, to go over yet.
Okay. Is anybody ready to move on?
I'm ready.
Okay. Okay, so. Jesse, your report.
Um, tax bills. Will be sent out the end of the month, Saturday, our clerk hours will begin in January, and the first is on a Sunday, so bills may not be available to view on our webpage until Monday, the second, but check on the first, they may be, I just, I don't know yet. There's also evening hours at the town hall that I will be available to receive payment by appointment, so if anybody prefers or, you know, can't make a Saturday or another time during the week. Then just call and we can arrange time.
Okay, that's my appointment, basically.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And that's it.
Great.
Hooray.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yesterday, or tomorrow, I will be making a phone call to the village of Camden. They actually lost their whole highway barn, everything yesterday.
Oh, really?
For.
A fire?
I'm gonna offer any, you know, kinda hope that they do need, whether it be some little stuff, but these guys have absolutely nothing, so. There was a post put out by the association, the private superintendents to make the phone calls, see if there's anything that we possibly have that needs. They lost a great truck, that was purchased this year.
They had a truck fire a few years ago, or something, right?
No. There's been a few. We're gonna make that phone call tomorrow, and see if we can help in any possible way, whether it be something little. I mean, one else, a chainsaw or something.
Are you gonna be firing their roads on Thursday tomorrow?
Union's about seventy miles away. It's not like it's right.
Oh, I thought you said Candor.
No, no.
Okay.
So it's in Amada County.
Okay.
So, we're gonna put, again, we're gonna put that out there, anything we can do at all. And then, if you guys don't mind, we'll talk about the resolution, but if it turns, I know there's some questions, I've heard some questions. So, as everyone knows, last project season, we put in to replace the town pickup. This truck has been replaced every three years. Even before me, it was replaced every three years. Biggest reason being the warranty. So, in three years, it's done with warranty. So I wanna clear a few things off. Now, I mean, by this, I just set my record straight on this truck. This truck is actually a patrol truck for the town of Carol. I don't know if everybody really understands what that actually.
Patrol truck?
Patrol.
Speak up.
Hey Bobby, can I just ask for clarification about what truck we're talking about?
We're talking about the.
This is the truck that we agreed to buy for you, or is this a different truck?
So we, this is the one that I current, this is the one I drive. My work truck, and when we did budget season, we, you know, put in the other ones on. So there's two trucks, two, small pickup trucks, those ones are replaced every five years, this pickup is replaced every three years. And when I say patrol truck, this truck had, gets more wear and turn out than anything we know. This truck does not go to the grocery store, it's not my own personal truck. This truck is actually a town truck, and is very long town distance. Just so everybody knows, I have my own personal truck, I don't use this as a personal truck, again, this is strictly a business truck, and this is a business transaction. With that three, or, let me, let me go back to the control truck. In case everybody really doesn't know exactly what that truck does, that truck is out. Reporters of the winter, it is out the door at two thirty every morning, with myself sitting. Whether it's snowed on Longtree Road, or whether it's snowed, if it's other than. First truck out the door, all the other guys, so it's gotta be out before anything. This truck also during the day, actually responds with myself and any other town, or a town, having a guy that is around for car accidents, you know, we had one the other day on Sunday morning. Sunday morning alone, I drove approximately a hundred and sixty miles around the town of Carolina in this truck. That's actually what that truck does in one day. On a Sunday. If I don't take this truck out in three years, this truck will just drive, pay for what we originally paid for. So, I'm, I'm assuming about a fight, a difference from what we paid for to what we'll get out of it. By then, over the last three years, that's sixteen hundred dollars a year. You can't afford to actually buy one.
How much did you pay for that one?
What's that?
How much did you pay for that one?
That one was, by the time I put a claw on it, was around forty, forty-five, forty-six. It's no secret, everything is going all tremendously, ten million to a ton of, almost shy of sixty thousand dollars. So it also responds to nine-one-one phone calls. And that's responding to, with myself, again, and I see, your phone calls at night, for dirt trees, road conditions, anytime there is ice or anything else that I haven't picked up and driven around. And if there is a fire in the town of Carolina, whether it be Brookendale, St. Louis, or Speedsville, I myself respond to that fire call, especially in the winter. And I call one, usually call one salt truck in by the time it's done, because of the amount of water that's put out. So this truck doesn't just drive me back and forth to work, or get me from wherever I need to go. It's again, this is not my personal truck, and this is strictly a business transaction. And it is, it's the best deal for the town to actually, still have access.
Like, just to be clear, we're aware of that, right?
You're aware of.
That this is your business truck. I mean, no.
I assume so.
Yeah, definitely, I don't know if you're, yeah, so just.
I think we all understand that.
Yeah.
Just wanna clear some things up, but, um. It is about that time, this truck is actually gonna have to go to waters, um, he'll change the oil on it, three, two and a half weeks ago. And is terrified to change the oil, and the oil pan is just about rotted off, and we're gonna be lucky, I don't. Had to get it from the shop here real quick, so. This truck's at three thousand miles. The other truck that we have to replace this year is about twenty-six thousand miles, but to just give you an idea, what the salt has done to the two thousand eighteen. Twenty-six thousand miles on the power steering pump, rotted off the side of the truck. So, these, these trucks take a bigger beating than that.
And it's two to three year rotation, it's sort of the standard product.
Spend three years on a patrol truck, and five years on a heavier, two tons, so.
Yeah, we understand that, so.
It's just, it's time to do it, supply is terrible. I called on about eleven different trucks, tried to get everybody to hold something, all back the next day, oh, we're starting over. The supply line has been terrible. We built something from scratch, the chances are we'll see it until probably next year. I give everybody, uh, basically the rundown sheet of the truck itself. Truck actually hasn't even finished pressing the assembly line yet, so it's gonna be a little bit. Currently working with GM fleet to actually add a song to that, which will increase warranty limitations and pricing. And warranties from, on some things from thirty-six thousand to a hundred thousand. And will decrease pricings with incentives through GM, so. The, and get all that stuff back.
So the price, so you, you're ready to get this truck, and this is sixty-eight five, it's a truck that's on state bid, is that right?
This truck will be on, yes, GM's.
Okay.
It's GM's fleet.
And you got two other bids, or something like?
I've actually got four other bids, five other bids, and they're all the same, everybody's been a few hundred dollars each other, so. Expect the same exact truck out.
And the bells and whistles that you have are all things that you need.
It's all the same, it's no more than what this truck is. This truck is a simple Chevy LT pickup truck. So, it's nothing that's fancy, there's about five more upgrades from that, if you want to go higher. You're looking at about eighty-nine thousand dollars for people's trucks.
Okay.
And this is something that the county does every time around, it's, right, everybody's got it for three years, and they're trying to work for two years.
But the previous truck wasn't.
The previous truck is gas, but, um. It gets about, sounds like it's about three miles a gallon. It makes for a lot of trips to the fuel, to the gas pump. Um, currently, at the highway department, we stop one thousand gallons of gasoline. Currently, the only thing that takes gasoline, um, right now is my pickup. So it seems senseless to stop pile of thousand gallons of gas for one truck. We don't even use the gas in our chainsaws or pumps anymore, we buy, uh, we buy the premium stuff on free, um, which is safe. Full sauce, all of that, so, to get the gas we actually currently have is strictly for that pickup, right? So, um, I talked, we'll fire all three fire departments, nobody's really using gas. So, maybe in the near future, we can do right away with gas can probably go.
You should get your Ford Lightning. I'm like, not even.
If it would actually hold up to it?
Well, anyway, that.
It's an electric.
But I mean, the mileage that that truck goes, it would be well within charge, it would generate power, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what's generated, plug your house in, sure, it's like, electrically out.
I'm partly kidding, because it doesn't facilitate your need in the moment, but I'm just saying, if you weren't really planned, I mean.
So I think down the road, some things may change that way, but until Ford comes up pickup truck. I mean, this truck is.
In three years, I want an electric.
I mean, we might be able to get, start with a company, I can get him one, but.
I mean, TCAT has what, eleven electric buses now?
Right, but TCAT also wasn't some, that was overbought.
You can, you can go, I, I've got an electric car, it zips.
I know you have an electric car, we're talking about.
I know, but I'm saying, it would be bigger. It's not like they, they tumble around and can't go fast.
So given the fact that we're not gonna be getting an electric.
We're not.
Right now.
I was trying to lighten the mood, okay.
We got so much to do.
Yeah, I understand. So I think we should, I think we should amend, a friendly amendment to the resolution to make it an electric. Okay, so. Okay, so. Should we do that resolution?
Are you adding?
Yeah, we'll add it.
Okay, you wanna do it now?
Do you want me to do it now, or do you want me to put it on the organizationally for you, how would it work? Either way.
Let's, yep, either way, let's do it now.
It's more likely that I won't forget about it.
Let's, let's do it now.
So I'll offer a resolution to authorize an order for a new pickup truck as forward with the vendor sheet, um, with an MSRP, um, of sixty-eight five. Take delivery next year. All in favor? I oppose.
Thank you.
So you, you've got a resolution for your, your, your report though, too, right?
What's that?
That's part of your report.
Yes.
Are you done with your report?
I believe so, and if I remember anything else, I'll.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to say, yes.
Okay, go for it, okay, so, um. See, um, that gave us a nice, uh, report earlier, as did Dan, uh, any updates?
Not the zoning commission is meeting tomorrow night. It's fifteenth, sixteen, fifteen, fifteen, seventeen, on thirty. That's meeting is to be discussing feedback that they received during the question and answer session.
Okay.
Towards trying to do.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you. Move on, so. Hey, you wanna move your resolution?
Well, how do I can start reading it first?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's variable, if you wanna read the whole thing or not, or you can read the, the title and resolve, or, yeah, go for it. Go for it.
Not that long.
Speak to the speaker.
I will speak to the speaker, okay. Oh, this is resolution for the approval to contract with Hunt Engineers, architect surveyors to create professional engineering feasibility report of the municipal fiber to the home network. Whereas the town of Carolina is, many, many residents and businesses do not have access to commercial broadband. And whereas closing the digital divide is critical, as without broadband internet service, citizens are cut off in school, work, healthcare, and families. Having internet connectivity is essential, as having heat, electricity, and water. Whereas repeated attempts to engage commercial broadband providers to provide access to rural and remote areas has had the limits of success. And whereas a neighboring town of Brighton has created a municipal fiber to the home network, BrightonFiber.com, contracting with Hunt Engineers. And whereas Brighton supports extending their network into and across the town of Caroline. And where New York State has created the Connect All Initiative that, quote, will empower local municipalities and state agencies to set up nation-leading broadband infrastructure statewide. Ensuring that every New Yorker is actually believing that when they need it. This feasibility study would allow the town of Caroline to apply for and be in a position to obtain funds from the Connect All grant as they become available. And whereas Hunt Engineers has experience and is currently working with the town of Brighton, implementing their fiber to the home network. And where other town Caroline has ARCA funds to be used to address community needs, including broadband connectivity. So be it resolved that the town of Caroline agrees to contract for content engineers, architect surveyors, to create professional engineering feasibility report to municipal fiber to the home network. And that the cost of the report will be paid for by the town of Caroline's ARCA funds, and that the cost be not more than sixty thousand dollars.
Great. Second by ten. And. So I'll just mention, off the bat, the issue of procurement policy came up, and, um, that occurred to us as well, uh, uh, this is a specialized service, um, by a firm that has already done this kind of work. Uh, this would be an extension from that same project. It's a specialized service, and, um, so, your policy allows us to to extend these funds for this kind of specialized service. And this, I'm gonna ask in, in your application for the recovery fund money. This was, I, this was actually an aspect of that proposal, or not?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
This was an aspect of that, it was, um, uh, we had, I gave a letter to people, yeah, last week, um, from Hunts, which was part of the, um, the, the grant application. Um, saying how much it would cost for a feasibility study to be done. Um, yeah, so that I have that in writing, I also have the feasibility study for Brighton. And have watched, um, people from Hunts work with Brighton to get people to sign on, to reach out, do outreach, and that's, 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 but, um.
Would that be part of what they're gonna give us, or not?
No, no, that would be the next step. Possibility studies, so this is how much it will cost, it would be steps. Then, there would be another vote to take them on for those steps.
Right, right, right.
So, um. So, um, this would be. Yeah, how, how it would work. So they would work with. They were going to who the internet providers are in the town. How they, some, some of the internet providers they work with, right, and, and in, in Brighton. And so, and then also how they put it, put it into some of Brighton's existing. Pops a point of, I would forget that.
It'll be.
Presence, position, anyway, point of presence. Um, and then the possibility, the idea is to have one here in Slaterville and then brought from there to be put up for their system. I know a lot of detail to be worked out like. Brighton setting up a billing situation and hopefully we'll be able to just kind of go in for that. So would be added work for Jesse or whoever. So, um, and right now they're offering. Residential cost for um, is a, for internet connection and. Is this is fiber is forty five dollars a month and they expect it to go down. Uh, but they've taken up this big bond and they've done a lot of legal footwork on this. And um, make sure they can do it. Um, they've also had spectrum suddenly paying a lot of attention to the town of Brighton. So. Some of the negative up there, they're, we can't do this, so you can't, New York State, there are some states where municipalities cannot do this. So I think it's just, it's a great opportunity for us to basically piggyback on all the work they've done. And to continue without, out into Caroline. So. Um, I know fifty seven, it's actually uh, fifty two thousand dollars, um, then five thousand more for. Contingencies, so I rounded it up to sixty. I know it's a lot of money. Um, but I really do feel that the internet's service is something the town really has to, it's not just what you're saying, that the town board meetings and information meetings, zoning. It's also schoolwork, it's, you know, a lot of stuff. I mean, I, I, part of me would like to go back forty years. Something they have to know. But honestly, my whole life revolves around backing, I, I mean, it's all this stuff.
Sure.
You know, so everybody knows that. So I think it's definitely worth the sixty thousand. So that's, if anybody wants to.
I think it's great. I mean, like addressing here over and over and over again, some numerous people, oh, fine, that's a product now. Yeah, it's a total no brainer to me. I mean, I, you know.
We don't give.
We don't, right. As it turned out, so I hope it's seen as a positive. I appreciate their comment about it and perplexed for the comment about it because this is exactly what everyone's been asking for. And we just need to get it done.
And all that, we've been sitting here, the four years that I've been on the board. We've been grappling with the private suppliers from Spectrum to even peacefully, et cetera. We've bent over backwards to get this done. We've been frustrated by the limitations, the private suppliers. This is an incredible opportunity. And, and um, the great thing about. This engineering firm is the total budget to do it. There's no way we would get anybody else to do it more economically. And they're gonna have us already set up. And I also just want to say publicly, based on Dan's. Hesitant announcement of the roughly, what is it, one thirty five thousand? That we maybe, that's an incredible boon to this town. To combine it with our art of funds. This is what we wanted to do all along. So I'm incredibly enthusiastic about this. And I think it's just, thank you, Kate. It's a huge step forward.
Sure, I mean, I put the ARCA on because I didn't know.
No, I think that's a, that's a good thing to know.
Yeah, so we wanted to use the ARCA on anyway.
They're all pushing in the same direction and specifically called out broadband. So this is awesome. So, great, thank you. Okay, I, I'm hearing um, a lot of support and no concerns and it's, I would like to call a vote unless there's more conversation to be had. Are you none? Um, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. All right. Now we're gonna move. Through a few resolutions. And.
Yeah, I gave you one. Right here.
Oh, it's all on here. Yeah, I guess. Okay, can I draw that? Okay, thank you. I only have the one page thing that I printed my.
I gave you one. You got one there.
Yeah, I know, it's, but see, this is a mess here.
Just do it.
Okay, uh, so what resolution to set the town of Caroline employee wage increase, result to Caroline, I've worked here, bringing increases two thousand twenty three employee rate rates by four point five percent. Second by Catherine, um, I don't think we need a long discussion. We budgeted for this.
Fifty employees.
Would be. It would be Richard. Bow it. I, I do. Cliff. Any, anyone that's not. Yes, what's that?
Basically non union contract.
Yeah, yeah, so. What are you wondering, Cal?
I just was wondering if it should be.
Non union.
Oh, clarify.
Because of some of the.
Well, that's kind of it. Okay, I got you. So. I'll just, is it okay to just put non union?
Yes, whatever. It just, it just seems a little.
Thank you.
More.
Yeah.
Specifically.
Yeah, they're clarifying, so. Um, so I was with the Cal friendly amendment to add uh, two thousand twenty three non union employee rate rates. Call for vote on that. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Great, thank you. I offer a resolution to set the two thousand twenty three employee health insurance terms. This is exactly the same resolution we passed last year. So. Would you like me to read through it or, okay? What did you say, Cap? No, no. Okay, good. So it's exactly, basically, I'm just saying, it's just to specify that the employee responsibility is sixteen percent of the premium, so. Everything else stays the same, so. If there are no other questions, I will call for a vote.
Second.
Oh, I didn't get a second. Thank you. And second by Kate, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great. We're quick and ran along. Offer resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign the two thousand twenty three Caroline fire protection contracts with Eastover, Fire and Driftendale. Do I have a second? Second by Cal. The result is exactly what I just said, so. Any further questions? All in favor? I oppose, and you know, we. We basically tried to fight that when we passed the budget, uh, for those, and so we did the public hearing of that too. Offer resolution authorizing supervisor to sign the two thousand twenty three agreements for walk, purchasing, purchasing of workers' comp insurance. Um, I should say, yeah, that's right. Second by Cal. With this.
You agree with their resolution as well?
Yeah. I was, you know, the best, just to specify that. Put from down Slaterville Fire Districts get their workers' comp through this arrangement, so cooperative purchase. Without further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? You are, though. Offer resolution endorsing the three year snow and ice agreement with Tockins County. Uh, that was just a three up, so this is the. The agreement for cooperation with the Caroline Highway Department to um, the Flower County roads in the winter.
You have any comments on that, Bob? It's a, now it's. Yeah, yeah, it means you're gonna pay us for the next three years.
Yeah. You'll notice the wording I put. Endorsed. It's like, it was effective October one. It's like, I, I wanted to memorialize it by a resolution. Yeah, and so if everybody's wanting, did we ever do that? There it is, so.
It's actually a part of the copy of our previous one.
Yeah.
It's just time and materials.
With my church.
It's any increase with gasoline prices, like gasoline prices.
So all stuff, all that goes off like state female numbers. So any change, everything else can change, but it's a time and material.
Yeah.
Okay.
Job, so, so these will be, will spend dollars a gallon with prior revolution. A bunch. Once female raises their number, but it's, it all works out.
So all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Great, we're authorized.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay. I will offer a resolution to authorize a supervisor to sign the two thousand twenty three agreement for legal services with um, Guy Chrome, a favorite of Taylor. And the, his, his legal fees are not going up. Second by Kate, any further discussion? Are you none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? How we doing, Jesse? We're moving along.
Great. Transfers.
I will. Oh, yeah, okay, so here's where I do need, I'm in trouble now.
Why?
You added a couple, right?
Yeah, so this is from the agenda announcement. Well, here we go. I have it. So I will offer a um, reserve fund transfer resolution. Resolve the Caroline Town Board approves the transfer of thirty seven thousand four hundred seventy six dollars and five cents from primary reserve fund. EA two three three to expenditure, expenditure account, EA fifty one thirty point two machinery equipment. Uh, towards the purchase of. A chipper. Beaver beaver. And. I get a second on that.
No.
This is mobilizing certain monies for that purchase. Questions, all in. I, I, opposed? Thank you. Now I will offer a luminous budget transfer resolution. Resolve the Caroline Town Board approves the following budget transfers. Seventy four fifty from A one one oh point four court contractual to the supervisor contractual account. Five sixty five from work equipment to. Or contractual. Five hundred from contingency to public information contractual. Four fifty five for contingency to insurance. Five thirty from contingency to municipal dues, one twenty from contingency to traffic control. Two seventy from contingency to code enforcement contractual, one hundred from garage contractual to garage equipment. One thousand five twenty one from contingency to historian contractual. Ten thousand four forty two point five two. From general repairs contractual to machinery equipment fifty one thirty point two. And twenty one thousand one hundred and six twenty nine from. BA fifty one twelve point one improvements personnel services to do a fifty one ten point one general repairs of personnel services. And thirty thousand eight ninety three point seven one from DA fifty one forty two point one snow removal personnel services to DA fifty one ten point one general repairs personnel service. And that's it. Do I have a second? Did I get a second?
There's a question, like two of them I can talk about tomorrow. All of them are smart, quite.
So we, we can look at, we've got it. All in, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Person joining.
We will offer a. Resolution to pay the town's bills. Do you have the amounts there, Jesse? Can you announce?
Eighteen thousand four hundred forty two dollars and thirteen cents for the general fund. A hundred and two thousand seven hundred twenty five dollars and seventy six cents for the highway fund. And two hundred and eighty four dollars and forty two cents for the street light fund.
Great.
Second.
Second by Catherine. Any conversation about those? Okay, all in favor? All right. Okay, thanks for being so cooperative. And is there any, any feedback on the minutes of December seven for? This council? Or no? That's good.
The character development was excellent.
The uh, minutes of December seventh are thereby approved. Thank you, Jesse. Okay, so I'm at the end of this agenda page. Have I forgotten anything? I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, you forgot.
I forgot something, didn't I?
Oh, the resol- the resolution for the history club and the resolution for Monica Roth.
Thank you. And another thing too, so before we be, we, well, we're one resolution away from it. I wanted to, maybe this should be, let me offer a resolution to. To pay impending. Um, bill for salt procurement. Um, with the December bills. Um, with the voucher to be examined by the supervisor. That will be in the December bills. Um, this is to save the headache of encumbrance. Bill, Bob will be ordering salt after the snowstorm. To recover from that.
There was one, I forgot all, it would be equipment repair. Um, but I haven't received that bill. Paints repair shop, so. It shouldn't be a huge one.
Oh, and that one too, there possibly.
There'll be an equipment repair and we saw.
Okay, and that would be this month? Possibly, or probably. Okay, so those two though. Thank you. Second by Tim. Further discussion or complaints? Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Now I will offer a. Do you want to? No, wait.
I don't have it.
Are you trying to?
Yeah, fun people.
Oh, yeah. So. I will. Let me get back to paperwork anyway. I'll offer a resolution for the town of Caroline to sponsor the Caroline History Club in their grant application to. New York humanities.
Humanities in New York.
Humanities here. Very, thank you. And. Second by Kate, and I think we discussed it before, any further? Conversation or questions? Hey, great. All in favor? I oppose. Great, thank you. I will. Do you want to move this resolution for?
Oh, I don't have exactly one, but.
So just, I'll move it to the second, so I'll offer a resolution to authorize. The, the town. To contract with Monica Roth. For. As consultant for the town's. And. Ag and farm and protection planning. For five thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. By Catherine, and you have anything to add to that, or anybody have questions? So, great. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay.
You're good.
But you also agree? I will offer a resolution. To adjourn.
I'll second that.
Second by Kate. Do we have a discussion? Are you none? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody.